Moment of silence, we'd like for you to stand for both. We'd like, and I know my colleagues have, will be making some additional comments. Please keep in mind a couple of folks in our moment of silence, and in no particular order. We had a young man lose his life here in the city over the weekend. We would ask that you keep his family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. We lost a dear friend out in Slippery Rock Township, Sonny Proch, who was a supervisor out there. Very fine person. And within the last couple of weeks, we've lost two former tax collectors in the county. Nobert McGee out in Perry Township and Susan Swanick in New Beaver Borough. They have each passed away, so if you'd be kind enough to keep their families in your thoughts as well. So with that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and ask you to remain standing. Commissioner Steelvogel, would you please listen to the words?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, if we'll take a moment for silence, please. Thank you all so much. Vanessa, would you call roll?
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Here.
Commissioner Beer?
Present.
Commissioner Vogel?
Here. We have a forum. We always have two opportunities for public comment, one in just a few moments, and then one prior to the adjournment of the meeting. We would ask if you do have comments or questions, that they be related to county government matters. If it's a state-related matter, we'd suggest you contact your state legislators. If it's federal, obviously your federal legislators. And if it's a local municipal issue, we suggest that you contact your local municipal officials. But if it's a county-related matter, you've come to the right place. And the other thing we would ask, if you do have a comment or question, if you try to perhaps limit your time to about five minutes, out of respect for people's schedules. And you're welcome to comment both times, or one of the two times, or if you're just here to listen, that's equally fine, so thank you for that. We have next on the agenda, and I trust everybody got a copy of the agenda. We do have Earl Officer Reports and Comments. Our county comptroller, Mr. Crestapine, is here, I believe, for a bid opening. Correct. But Dave, anything over and above that?
No, that's it.
Thank you. It's always good to have you here. With that, I will open the floor for any public comments or questions that anybody might have at this point. With the understanding, we'll do it again before we adjourn. Hearing and seeing none right now? Okay, thank you all. I've neglected to note, this meeting is being recorded in two ways. We are, I still say tape recording, that shows my age. And then we have the YouTube recording that's being livestreamed, and then available by YouTube following the meeting. Hope I got that right. We'll move on to fiscal and contractual. Today, we have no repository properties to consider, but we do have, I believe, a bid opening. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes.
If you'd like to come up, our comptroller, Mr. Crestapine. We recently advertised for the sale of a Chevy Cruze that had been utilized by the Children and Youth Services Department. David, how many bids did we receive?
Just one.
Okay. Oh, was it received in a timely manner?
This is what's...
Thank you. Mind opening it for us?
It is from Leonard Lombardo from Newcastle, Pennsylvania, and the bid is for $900.
Generally, we take the time to refer this to the appropriate people within the organization. If that's the wish of the board, I could entertain a motion to table the bid for that purpose. Second. Thank you.
Second.
Any questions or comments from either of you?
Just out of curiosity, and we've discussed this before, I'd also like, I haven't scrapped the vehicle just for the metal in many years, but I'd also ask maintenance just to call a few of the local metal processors and ask, what's the general price for a, you know, old thing? It used to be like $300 you would get for the scrap metal. I don't know if that's gone off, gone down, but I'm glad we got a bid for $900. But just to be safe, can we also ask that maintenance get a bid on what we're in scrap metal before we decide whether to award this or not at next week's meeting?
Works for me. Joe, would you mind talking to Frank about that? Thank you.
I know catalytic converters are hot items.
Catalytic converters.
Well, I appreciate your suggestion, along with the motion to table.
Yes.
So with that, if there are no other questions, we'll do a roll call on the motion to table.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Beer?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. David, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. You're welcome to stick around, but if you're a busy man, which you usually are, we understand.
Good.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, we do receive most weeks from the comptroller's office, the warrant registers, which are a listing of the bills that have been paid. These particular registers are dated June 7, 8, and 9. They're available for anybody who wishes to look them over. And with that being said, I'll give my colleagues the time that they need to review them. And whenever one of you might be ready, I could take a motion to accept these documents.
I just reviewed them, and I'll move that they be approved.
Thank you, Brian.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you very much, Loretta. And I looked them over earlier this morning, so we do have a motion to accept the warrant registers. Are there any comments or concerns? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Beer?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes of last Tuesday's meeting, June 6. They are in our packet, they're available for anybody who cares to look at them. And give my colleagues the time that they need to look them over. And whenever one of you's ready, I could take a motion to adopt the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Thank you both. Any questions or concerns about the minutes? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Beer?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We did not have any written communications that needed to be entered into the record for the past week. So that takes us down to Commissioner Reports and Comments. We set aside time for each commissioner to provide any updates they might have. And we rotate, so today it's Loretta's turn to go first.
Very good. I just wanted to update, I know for the last couple of meetings, we've been talking about the exercise that happened with our Public Safety Department. And we did receive the results of that exercise from the Western Regional Director, Philip Barker, for KEMA, that's the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. And the letter indicates that to please accept his sincere congratulations on a successful exercise. Mr. Chad Stru and his emergency operations staff successfully responded to a myriad of emergency incidents simulated during this test. An exercise such as this enhances the capability of the county to adequately respond to various emergencies that may endanger the health, safety, and property of its citizens. So that is a completion of that exercise. It is something that we have to go through, and it's good to know that we did pass. And there are many, many agencies in that command center, that room, there were probably 30 people participating from different agencies, whether it be federal, state, and/or county. So we're very happy that we did get a passing grade on that and know that we are capable of handling any type of an emergency situation.
I'd like to thank you particularly, because you did participate.
Yes.
Mr. Beer and I had a meeting, I believe, in Mercer County that day. We were able to divide and attend both functions. I wished I could have gone, because then I could have told my doctor I was getting some exercise, but...
Just couldn't resist, just couldn't resist.
But again, I really appreciate that you participated. That helps us out immensely, and it was a good letter.
Absolutely, it was a good letter, yes.
What else do you have today?
That was it. I just figured there's a lot of different information that we all probably want to pass a little bit on, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Beer?
Thank you, Commissioner Steelvogel. I just got that letter yesterday and read it, and I'm glad you mentioned that. I wanted to bring that as well, but I did not. Just a side note, I think I mentioned, a few weeks back, I was in Darlington Township, Beaver County, at the resource fair put on by the state. And I met Mr. Philip Barker, who's the Western Regional Director for Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. And we started talking, and here he grew up in Newcastle, PA. And his first cousin lived across the street from me, so it was nice to meet Mr. Barker. But just, I want to congratulate our team
The team, yes.
From the commissioner to the public safety. I was very pleased to report a very positive review of our Emergency Operations Center exercise. So thank you again for reading that letter and participating in that event.
Absolutely.
I've always, in the time I was commissioner before and now, I'm a big supporter of the 911 Center and public safety, because it's something that sometimes we take for granted, but we're all glad it's there when we need their assistance, so. My only other comment this morning, and Commissioner Vogel alluded to it. I was very saddened this week to learn of the passing of one of our dedicated township supervisors here in Lawrence County. Leo Proch, who everybody called Sonny, has been a Slippery Rock Township Supervisor since 2015. On a personal note, his family, my family, have attended the same church. So I knew him many years ago. I just got recently reacquainted with him. I took office again as commissioner. He was at the Planning Commission meeting on a Slippery Rock Township, and I had a nice conversation with him. And then he participated in the fam tour recently, when we had folks come up from Pittsburgh. And quite a gentleman and very dedicated township supervisor. So I extend my sympathy to his family and his co-supervisors in Slippery Rock Township. In addition to serving as supervisor, he was also active with the Slippery Rock Township, Volunteer Fire Department, and the Lawrence County Search and Rescue Team. So I hope he rests in peace and grateful for the dedicated life and service of Sonny Proch to the county and the township.
When you say, when you say one of a kind, he truly was...
He was an amazing guy.
They, literally, he was the only one in that mold to say, broke the mold. Truly dedicated, truly, truly dedicated, and will be missed.
That's all my compliments.
Thank you, thank you as well. Ellen, I'll add to our remarks regarding Supervisor Proch. He was a gentleman, he had a great sense of humor, and he was a funny man. He made you laugh.
His jokes were better than humor.
Yeah, I know.
I have to say.
I'll second that move.
I'll take that as a compliment. But you know, the one thing that exceeded his sense of humor was his kindness. He was a very kind man. We will all miss him. As Mr. Beer and Mr. Steelvogel said, we do extend our equal sympathy to his family and his large number of friends. Everywhere he went, he either had friends or he made friends, wherever he went. I'll just note, since we met a week ago, I did attend the monthly meeting of the Lawrence County Conservation District Board, of which I am a member. Routine business was discussed there. I want to thank Commissioner Steelvogel. She arranged to have Mr. Ben Bush come up to the courthouse. He's the gentleman that will be the new executive, helping with his title
And CEO.
CEO of the four...
Four words.
Lawrence County Chamber Economic Development. And Loretta sits on that board. So he came up and took time to not only meet the three of us, with a number of department heads and other elected officials. I know Mr. Crestapine came up to meet him. So thank you for arranging that.
Absolutely.
And then last Friday, Commissioner Steelvogel and I attended the meeting of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania's Board of Directors, which was held actually in Vanango County in Franklin. The current president of the board is a county commissioner from Vanango County. So traditionally, in the summer months, the board president hosts the meeting in his or her home county. And I believe that there are only three counties, and I could be wrong, but I think there are only three counties in the state that have more than one member on that CCAP board. It's Lawrence, Berks, and Tioga. I may be missing another one.
No, Kevin, is he still on?
He is, as being passed, so he has Butler County, you're right. So, but of 67 counties, there are only four that have more than one person on the Board of Directors. And then, of course, quite a number of the counties that don't have anybody on the board. So it was a good meeting. It went very well. And I know we have a lot on the agenda today, so I'll conclude my remarks at this point and move forward. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, our friends from CYS, Mr. Bout and Mr. Grippo are both here. If you gentlemen would care to come up, either one or both, however you want to do it. Thank you. Mike, I appreciate that. John Bout is our CYS director. And again, thank you both for joining us today. You have a couple of proposed resolutions. Vanessa, what would the first number be?
162.
Number 162 is a proposed agreement with Avanco International. John, would you like to fill us in on this, please?
Yes, Commissioner. Good morning. Avanco is the developer and services our case management system, CAPS. So this is a renewal contract for the child accounting and privacy system, CAPS. This year's anticipated base cost is $37,573.10. That's up from last year approximately about $3,000. And this is reimbursed at 80/20, with the county share after reimbursement being 20%.
Thank you for that. I'll see if my colleagues have any questions. Loretta?
None.
No? Brian, any questions for John?
No.
Okay, thank you. So John, you're recommending that we move on this, we move forward?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'll ask for a motion then for a proposed Resolution 162.
So...
Second.
Thank you both. Any further questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Beer?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. The next proposed resolution is a proposed contract, or as it's listed here, purchase of service agreement with the Deveraux Foundation out in Villanova, Pennsylvania, which I believe is just outside of Philadelphia. And we have two, number 163 and 164. But if you'd like to maybe talk about both of them with us, please, John?
Yes, Commissioner. So this, Deveraux is a provider that has two of our children placed. Deveraux made the decision approximately two months ago to open a separate cottage or new program. And the two children that we have at Deveraux are placed there through a prescription as residential treatment. Up until this point, reimbursement primarily has been through Health Choices, with all but $8 a day picked up through the Health Choices Program. But Deveraux provided notice to us and to other counties that they would be moving the two children that we have placed in that RTF program to a new cottage or new program that is going through the credentialing process. And so they presented two options to us. The option was to move forward with the agreement that the board has before that, or by June 19th, come on-site and relocate the children to new programs. One of, you have a contract or agreement for, one uniquely for each child that is there. One of the children will be at Deveraux for about 30 days post-approval of this agreement, at which time that child will be transitioned to a foster care provider, and so will no longer be at Deveraux. So one of the two is going to be very kind. The other, the other child is a child with very complex needs that no other provider currently in the Commonwealth is willing to accept. And so that child has been, the second child, in an instance, really, the first child to Deveraux has been at Deveraux now for almost four years. And is really limited on where the child can be located. And so for us, Deveraux is at an 80/20 reimbursement. After reimbursement, the county share is 20%. But I do want to note for the board that our initial upfront expense will increase by approving this agreement. Currently, we are paying incidentals. But that's because Health Choices picks up the lion's share of the cost. With Deveraux moving the children to a non-approved Health Choices program, we will have the added cost of picking up the full per diem, which is $352 a day. And then any additional one-to-one service they need, they bill us out of cart. So we will see an initial increase in expense related to these children. Again, one of which time for 30 days, the other, I have to tell you, is open-ended, because there's no program in the Commonwealth. And when I tell you we explored programs, we have 100 denials. And have, over the course of several years, used our partners at the state through the Office of Children and Even Families to try to help us find alternative programs. I am frankly, I would add to the record, I am disappointed in this program, in Deveraux, in essence, applying an ultimatum to not just us, but to other counties. But it goes to what all counties in the Commonwealth are experiencing with complex cases, which is very limited provider options. So I have no other option to present to the board, other than the agreement that's before you.
Let me pose a question, maybe somewhat out of left field. And by the way, thank you both for the preparation of these documents. I know you had to put a lot of work into them, this whole matter that's been somewhat time-consuming for you and perhaps other staff members at CYS. I'll ask the question, I think I know the answer. But in recent visits, you have indicated that in certain circumstances, we have utilized services of out-of-state providers. In fact, I think within the last couple, three weeks, we had that discussion here. Was that looked into? Was it looked into to finding perhaps a place in Ohio or West Virginia? With the understanding, I guess, though, that in doing so, the reimbursement rates might not have applied, if you follow what I'm saying. Was that a possibility?
Yes. Whenever we, with the child that doesn't have a second option, we had searched not only in-state, but out-of-state for possible providers for that child. And out-of-state providers were secure RTFs, RTFs that by their construct in Georgia or Florida violate Pennsylvania law.
Explain RTF, if you would, please.
Residential treatment facility, which requires a doctor's prescription. And the programs that had been willing to accept this particular child would have provided restraint and medication, making it a secure RTF, which violates Pennsylvania law. So we have, we have no out-of-state provider options which are compliant with Pennsylvania law.
I appreciate that, number one, you looked into it. Number two, appreciate the explanation that you've given. Commissioner Beer, do you have any questions for John?
The only question I have is, what's the current age of the one child that has no other provider options other than Deveraux?
I believe 15, Commissioner.
We have to, we have to, they're the only one that can provide the needed services. We have no choice but to enter into the agreement.
Anything else? Thank you. Loretta, questions?
The same, they're unique circumstances, and again, we have to provide care.
Now, given the fact that the two resolutions, to a large extent, mirror one another, other than they involve two different people, two different juveniles, are you willing to take a motion for both proposals? Would one of you be willing to make a motion for 163 and 164? Or do you want to split them out? You're okay with both?
I'm okay with them.
Fine.
Okay.
I'll second the motion to adopt both 163 and 164, the two agreements with Deveraux.
Thank you both. And I'll see if there are any final questions. Loretta, anything else?
No.
Brian?
No.
John, anything we've overlooked?
I would just, I would just like to thank Mr. Bout through MHDS. Our departments work closely in trying to resolve this matter with Beacon, Health Choices, and Deveraux, to avoid the necessity of increasing costs. And so again, I extend my thanks to the other county department for working closely with us. We tried to resolve this before needing to come here.
I appreciate that. I know you enjoy a good working relationship with Scott. He's a top-notch professional.
Yes.
That's just his character. He's a very cooperative man, but I'm like him. So thank you for that. With that, I'm sorry, did we take the roll call yet? I don't think we did. Okay, if we're ready, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Beer?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Gentlemen, thank you both. You're welcome to stick around, but if you have to head up the street, we understand.
Thank you all, appreciate you.
Thank you very much. The next proposed resolution is number 165. And we noted, thank you, Amy, for coming up. Amy McKinney is our county planning director. I do want to note, we have some very friendly faces in the room today. The city, I always get it wrong, I always say business administrator, but that's not right.
City Administrator.
Thank you. Former Mayor Chris Frye, who's currently the city administrator. We have Angie Urban from New Visions and the CDC. And then we have three members, or two, members of city council and the mayor, Mayor Cameron, and council member Rogers and council member Ritter. And we're very happy to have all of you with us today. We appreciate your patience, as we've had to conduct some other business, as you can see. Before I turn it over to Amy, what we are going to be considering today is an allocation from our county's American Rescue Plan funds that we have received from the federal government. And as you know, over the course of the last number of months, we have been somewhat slowly forwarding some of these dollars out to a number of our municipalities and other entities within Lawrence County. And I will tell you, we've had some discussions with some other groups that are still ongoing. And I anticipate in the future, we will be having some further allocations coming about. We're very mindful of the fact that the dollars that we did receive, some of them are identified by federal law as restricted dollars. There are certain limitations placed on what we can do with those dollars. And then some are characterized as unrestricted, which do give us a little more leeway and flexibility. And if I misstate anything, please correct me. We've concurred amongst ourselves that we believe that some of these dollars do need to get out into the community. And they have gotten out, and that they will continue to get out into the community. But we also see a need for some internal matters here within the county government structure. Some capital projects that perhaps we've put off for too long, that need to be looked at. The roof of this building, for example, which would be a legitimate expenditure. This roof is as old as this building, and this building is over 40 years old. We would anticipate perhaps utilizing some ARPA money for some internal needs. And I will note that that has been the case, as we've noted, with other counties throughout the Commonwealth. Most counties seem to be taking some of their ARPA money and putting it out into their respective communities. And then they are keeping a portion of those dollars for their internal needs as well. So we're pretty much on the same page with most other counties in the Commonwealth. And I will also note that not only has the county received ARPA money, but our friends from the city of Newcastle received ARPA funds. Every municipality in the county, every borough and township received ARPA money, and every school district received ARPA money as well. But it's up to the elected officials to flesh it, within those respective governmental volunteer fleshings, to determine the best use of those dollars. And I think we're going to... And I think what we're going to look at today is one of those best uses. I will note that representatives of the city and along with Ms. Urban have met with us and have outlined some proposals that they have. And what I'd like to do is, since this has run through the planning office, Amy McKinney has been overseeing the administration of these dollars in cooperation with the controller. You have to give Mr. Press the pile a lot of credit. And then you, of course, have stayed very close with the county's auditors. They are very well-versed in the federal law. They have staff attorneys with whom we consult to make sure everything we're doing is legal and meets the letter of the law. But with all of that as background, and I will certainly be giving each of you an opportunity to talk as well. I don't want to dominate this conversation. But we do have a proposed resolution. We have received a request from the city of Newcastle. They have submitted to us some proposals. And what we're looking at today is the opportunity to allocate $800,000 of the county's ARPA money to the city, and Amy will get into that. Again, I do want to reiterate, we have met with some other groups, and we're continuing those discussions as well. So probably in the next upcoming months, we'll be having more discussions along these lines. Since I've spoken so much, I should, in fairness, I should see if you two have any opening comments. Mr. Burick?
No, once we have a motion in a second, I'll make a very brief statement.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Loretta, same thing? Okay, thank you. Amy, and then obviously, I'm not going to ignore our friends from the city. We'll give you folks an opportunity as well, if maybe you wish to make comments. But Amy, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, really, I'm just kind of a worker bee here. I, you know, like Dan said, I administer this program. I work very closely with getting to the controller, Corey Johnson. A press point, sorry. David Pressapine, sorry, David. David Pressapine and Corey Johnson, who was one of the auditors that works with the county. Everything that is proposed or asked of from the county, I run that by Corey, and we don't recommend it be approved unless Corey gives us the okay. Like Commissioner Vogel said, we sat with the city, and they outlined their plans for some revitalization I feared that they would like to do in the city of Newcastle. And after running that by Corey, everything looks good. We put together an agreement where the county will allocate $800,000 to the city doing the items that are specified in Attachment A, which is attached to the agreement, which I'm not sure, do you want me to talk about those projects? Or do you want?
Well, I know. Maybe we'll give our city friends that opportunity, and they can elaborate.
Yep.
But please continue.
But basically, oh yeah, all the items are approved. They will come out of our ARPA restricted public funds, and it's ready for the revitalization downtown Newcastle area.
I should note that the federal law requires that the recipients of these ARPA dollars, we have until the end of 2024, actually, to earmark the dollars, to basically say where they're going to go. And then we have until the end of 2026 to actually spend those dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, we have, the county has until the very end to show that all the funds have been spent.
So unlike the CARES money that came from the Trump administration during COVID, the COVID time in 2020, those CARES dollars, there was a very short window, and you would remember that as well, Mayor Frye. We didn't have a lot of time to get those dollars out the door. With the ARPA money through the current administration, we do have a little more time as far as this is concerned. So that's helpful to us, gives us a little greater opportunity to have these conversations. So with that, and I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but would anyone from the city who's here today wish to speak about what the proposals are?
Yes.
Mayor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Whatever's on the phone for you.
Yes.
So, first of all, appreciate your consideration, actual request. You know, obviously, we did have a meeting, and we went through some of the proposals. Don't want to get into too much details. At this point, we're still working through some negotiations on different buildings. But basically, the city is looking at putting in a commitment of upwards of $500,000 on top of this consideration. So we will be putting some of our ARPA funds into this as well, as long with other grant funding that we're currently, some already obtained, some we're looking at obtaining. But most of this money will be at projects that are downtown. So we're looking to revitalize the area downtown. I think everyone's aware of the First Merit Building. And thank you for your funding and help with that, for demoing that building. And there's also plans to make that a green space. So that will be part of the funding that we're requesting today is to have green space and not just an empty lot once that building comes down and to make good use of it. And then also a facade program. One, to show a commitment to our businesses that are currently down there. They've requested it through the Downtown Business Association. They're looking forward to this funding. We do have commitment from leave 12 roughly businesses down there. So they will put in some funding to match, and then we would give them funding. So up to $10,000, five matched from them, and five from the grant to improve the facade downtown. And then we do have other businesses on the outliers of town that will hopefully take advantage of this as well. That's kind of where we're at right now.
Mayor, thank you so much. Would anyone else who's representing the city care to add anything? Thank you all. Again, Mayor, thank you. Let me, Amy, I trust you've covered everything you need to cover.
Yes, yep. I do just want to note, so everybody, in the agreements that we've been entering into with all of our people that have been successful in awarding funds from the county, we are requesting that all of their funds be spent by June 30th of 2026, even though, so that way we can do our due diligence and make sure that we report out, you know, and we have the client blue set. So county must show all the funds are spent by the end of December, 2026. But all the agreements, we're asking June 30th of 2026, the funds to be spent. So just wanted to make sure.
I appreciate your noting that. Commissioner Spill Vogel, comments or questions?
Couple of comments. You know, for the last couple of meetings, I've always said, our Shenango project, I'm very happy with working with the Shenango Township Supervisors and the Shenango project to revitalize the plaza there. I have to be honest, this is right up there with that. You know, I am really, truly, truly excited to work with the city. You know, I feel very close to it, born and raised in the city, you know, making my living from the city. And being in a position now to work to revitalize that area, you know, it's been so maybe painful sometimes to get everybody on the same page, and because there are so many different ideas and things that people have wanted to come to fruition. But I have to be honest, sitting there and chatting and having a meeting and talking and having everyone on the same page and, you know, presenting a plan that is extensive as this one is, I think I'm really truly excited to be part of it and know that it's going to be huge for the downtown area. So I thank you guys for being so committed to it and coming to meet with us and us sitting together and coming up with a plan that we can participate in and be proud of. So thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Loretta. Commissioner Burick?
I'm going to move for the adoption of Resolution 165.
I will second.
Okay, thank you.
Then I'd like to make a comment, now that we have a motion moving in a second.
Absolutely.
I just want to thank Mayor Brian Cameron, Councilman Terry Rogers, Mayor Eric Ritter, Angie from the CDC in the visions, City Administrator Chris Frye. I've had the opportunity, since I've been in office here the last couple of months, to meet with them on a couple of occasions. And it's wonderful to see the time and effort that's been put into developing the vision and a plan for making it much-needed improvements to downtown Newcastle. I've mentioned before, I'm a lifelong city resident, and I've spent a good chunk of my career, believe it or not, working in the downtown Newcastle area. And so I'm very excited about the plans, and I'm very happy, as a commissioner now, for a short period of time, to be able to vote to allocate some of our ARPA funds to the city of Newcastle for the downtown revitalization. I'll just state what's been stated many times before. Newcastle is the largest municipality in Lawrence County. It's our county seat. Geographically, downtown Newcastle is near the center of the county. Whenever there's county-wide parades or events, the focus is often downtown. My wife and I enjoy many events downtown. The concert series put on at the Riverwalk. I try to support downtown businesses and restaurants whenever I can. And I'm very excited for this potential to move ahead with some much-needed improvements to downtown Newcastle. And so I just want to thank the city folks, and I'm very happy to vote yes for this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Burick. Well, even though I'm just a kid from Wampum, I do need to note, I did the math. I've actually worked in the city since 1980. Forty-three years I've worked, whether it be at Penn Power or in this building. I've been a worker here in the city. No, I would concur with the comments made by my fellow commissioners. Unless there are any other concerns or questions, I'll ask, we have a motion in a second, I'll ask it, a call to roll, please.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Burick?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Folks, you are all welcome to stay. We're probably going to be here another 15 minutes or so. If you have to move along, we certainly understand. We appreciate your time with us today.
Thank you all for being here.
Amy, are you able to stay? Again, some of these transfers, we might have questions. Mayor Frye, did you have your hand up?
No, I was just going to say thank you all. I know we're all very excited for what's around the corner for the city of Newcastle and Lawrence County as a whole, I think. I don't think any of us go day in without thinking about how this impacts our entire county. So we truly appreciate everything you guys have done and supported so much.
Thank you kindly. All righty, well, we're going to move on to the next issue, and a warden, maulmeister, is with us. Warden, if you're able to come up. We have a proposed resolution. This issue came about very quickly, and we have had consultation with our solicitor. We have had consultation with the other members of the prison board. Just for the record, I'll note that the county code stipulates that the oversight of a county jail does not rest solely with the board of commissioners. The law stipulates that there be a seven-member board that oversees the jail operations. That consists of the three commissioners, the president judge, the county controller, the district attorney, and the sheriff. So there are seven of us who make up the prison board. But an issue came up just within the last week that necessitated us taking some pretty quick action that is going to be talked about by the warden. And I want to stress that you did work very closely with the solicitor to make sure that this is all being done appropriately.
Yes, of course.
So this is proposed resolution 166. And unless my colleagues object, I'll ask the warden to fill us in.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Please.
Commissioner, I was contacted on Friday by the Westmoreland County Detention Center. They had some staffing issues and things like that, where they had two or three juvenile charges of dogs. Commissioner, like you said, I want to do it. Attorney Board, and I also contacted someone in prison board to find out if there are any agreements where we could house these individuals safely by law. Lawrence County Jail.
This was characterized by Westmoreland as an emergency for them, was it not?
Yes, of course.
Okay, they said those words, that they're Facebook emergency. Okay. So the proposed resolution, and it would be retroactive to June 9, would enter into an agreement with Westmoreland County to allow the Lawrence County Jail to house these offenders. Westmoreland County will pay $800 per juvenile offender per day for us to house these offenders. Let me see if Commissioner Spill Vogel has questions for the warden. And I want to, oh, I neglected to note, Commissioner Spill Vogel chairs the prison board. Please.
Just to reiterate what the warden has said. And also, as some background, as to maybe why we were contacted, you know, it was mentioned at last prison board meeting that we are contemplating opening a juvenile center at the Lawrence County Jail. There will be a separate area that is available at the jail where the juveniles would be housed. The reason that that is happening, and it is very similar to what happened with the two previous resolutions for CYS. The state has decided they want to be out of the juvenile detention facility business, therefore leaving a gap in places where these juveniles can be housed, whether they be as an adult and/or as a delinquent or dependent child. So we took it upon ourselves last year to start looking at this, and we've been progressing slow and steady because it's a huge endeavor. But we've been working with the state, the Office of Children, Youth and Families, and they were aware that we have that space available. And I believe Westmoreland was maybe giving a heads up that Lawrence County could do it. And we were able to oblige and take the juveniles and be able to house them. And as you said, warden, correctly and safely. And that is something that we always need to take into consideration that is then by law and with those safety precautions, which is custody, care, control.
All the reasons the board would need to be involved.
So, and as noted,